That is a fine city's hand, that's totally doable, absolutely, yeah.
Were there any other issues that the councilman had?
On page three of two dash five dash six, the budget for creation of the council, who's gonna, this financially gonna carry the record of the beans and the money in this right here? In the county or the city, who's gonna have a financial like issue, say, of this?
Well, as I just said, it was the, it was the building department that the city and county both used. Since we shared the building department, we were gonna have them.
Yeah, that's what made it convenient, so that he can come up with this idea to work with the other entity, was that, would it be, should it be the building department?
Okay, so the revenue will be tracked through the hurdle there. Okay, and I think that, the only thing I'd be like, the question I had was the meeting rules, open meeting law has to be followed, and then I think you answered one, Mayor, on the people.
We do have a motion on the second on the table, and so if you want to make a motion, that may...
They can amend the motion.
Right, I would amend my motion then, too. So I would want to approve pending...
In case of a, in case of a tie.
Yeah, just approve what we, the city needs to get done. So approve with a condition that in case of a tie, the tie would be broken by the respective board for the, for the land for which the entity is applying for some sort of changes on it.
You can...
Yeah, that'll be, that's all right, yeah.
Sounds like a good one. Are you, whoever made the second, are you okay with that?
I agree with that.
Any further discussion on this side? All on page?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry them so ordered. Uh, we'll move on to item eight, items for discussion, possible action only of the E D City Council for the consent agenda. This will be for the minutes, and, I don't know, we're gonna have to move over here. Close this for the minutes.
For September eighteenth, September nineteenth, and September twenty-sixth. Do you have any questions on not under consideration today?
Riddling them down, though.
Yes.
I'll enter the motion on the side.
I have a correction.
Sure.
On the eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken, the, was it page three, yeah, it said, by the way, seven years ago, several years ago, and I think that specifically it says in Taiwan, by the way, it's actually coming to the council almost thirty years ago, but I said several instead of seven. Is it just, pump that in there. You see it?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
It's in the third paragraph.
You see it?
Oh, okay, alright.
And it's, it's, it's not to change timeline, so I better read where you're...
Any other corrections? Do you want to make a motion with that?
I need to approve the, the agenda, the consent agendas, one, two, three, and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-sixth, but I meant, I have a correction.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry them so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, eighteenth and nineteenth was not in the packet.
With that, we'll move on to item eight, B, old business. One, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval of the move ordinance seven-two-seven, bill number twenty-nineteen dash ten to second reading, ordinance seven-two-seven amends chapter five of title one of the city code of the city of E Lee, requiring the city council to create a code of conduct for its members, prescribing that violation of the code of conduct constitute cause within the meaning of N R S two-six-six dot two-four-zero, eliminating appointed department heads, and creating a protocol for liaison appointments, prescribing that no city official may be appointed to a department for such appointments to implicate a conflict of interest, and adding a separate separability clause. With that, I will entertain a motion on this item unless...
And I do wanna note that, after, okay, after our discussion today, there is a typographical error. We think it's a waste of much time, so I think we're, yeah.
How about the number?
The number, yeah, the number, but it was always something that we could fix.
It's too many twos, too, there.
Too many twos?
Yeah.
Alright.
Did, um, I, I assume you all had a little bit of time to review in the packet what we had found from other cities around the state, or what they did. As you can see, it kinda runs the gamut between, you know, one sentence to a few paragraphs.
So, what would that look like? Would there be a committee that would come up with this?
The council is the committee, I mean, you guys, as I understand the interest, the council decides what their rules are gonna be.
So, do we do that in a meeting like this, or what?
Do you, I would assume you guys are coming to propose...
Everybody could give me their own drafts or whatever, and that's always been up there, right? We could bring them all to the, the meeting, and vote on one, or take pieces of one, and try to piece it into another.
I mean, I think it's, yeah, I think it's important to outline a code of conduct, for sure. I just wasn't sure what that would look like, or how we would do that, but I would move through.
Do I have a second?
This for a discussion, maybe?
Discussion for possible action.
Okay, that, that should also come along with it.
Okay.
Yeah, on the B, page two, and I still have a little bit of heartburn, but it says, "The mayor shall be responsible for the, they struck out department, administration of the city." So the mayor's duties are outlined already in chapter two-sixty-six, and on page one, you know, the mayor is the chief executive of the city of E Lee. And I, I get confused because in B, the way it was, department is listed down below, and C, administration department, and then as you go down into D, and over the layabout being appointed. I think, what, in my opinion, the wording, "The mayor shall be responsible for the administration of the city," I mean, look at western administration, like you are the top dog, you're gonna administer everything in the city. The interest says what your job is, and the mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city, and shall preside over the council in his session, and have all the power and duty to officer presiding over, blah, 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 there's five of those items. I just have heartburn where it says, "You are the administrator of the city."
Is that a, would you be okay with it if, if the mayor was the, over the administrative department?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I like, is, that's what he, he is right now, he's over the administrative department, which includes all these here. And when I look at that as, I think it leaves it open for somebody's misinterpretation. I'm the administrator, that's why I, that's why I look at, that's why, it's just a simple word, put the word department back in, administration, administration department of the city, and it goes down...
I agree with that, it's clearer, too.
I have no qualms about it.
They're all called departments in there, so just, you, you keep it, it's fair.
Thank you. And then, uh, then on, uh, I really liked what the city clerk, we did going out, researching, and getting people to, uh, send in their ideas, we got them from Skeet Henderson, Sparks, Fallon, Elko, and, this is just a little, I don't understand this here, I mean, we had these several days ago, and then West Wendover, the mayor, the research done by Mayor Robertson, I just have to ask the question, why did you pick West Wendover? Were you not happy with what the city clerk, her assignment was to do that? And the city clerk did it quite well, and I could look at this and say, I didn't speak to nothing, you have, I didn't like what I seen right there, so I'm gonna go look somewhere else, and, and Chris Melville and I, you know, we, we worked together, this guy wants to look at all this, you're gonna have to download all these different things he did, he was very vague in, in his approach to this, I, again, I think, it definitely needs to be researched into all these suggestions, what's going on there. But it just muddied the water when, the research done by Mayor Robertson, when we have a very capable city clerk who was given the assignment to do that, I don't feel it was the mayor's responsibility to go and research on his own.
No, and I, the, the issue there was not that I had any fault with what Jennifer Lee had researched, I was just reaching out and trying to get as much information as possible, so that we could have as many examples as we could. I, I've also worked with Chris in the past, and was talking with him, and probably not in seventy mil, I'm kind of what we're looking for. It certainly wasn't meant to be a commentary on the quality of research that Jennifer did, which is obvious, not enough.
Well, that time, I think all council people should go look around ourselves.
I think they should, they really should.
If, if you're interested in doing that.
Well, I think that's what we have to do, right? Is, we have to submit our proposals, right, for our code of conduct, that's what this is asking for, and, and whatever research we need to do in the meantime is our own, right?
We're making this a part of the, this is actually a one-part deal, and so, we would be, once again, who would be, okay, this, this, this is part of, this, attend, I admit it?
Not charted?
It is, it's kinda, I don't know how you separate it, is it right there, it says the code of conduct? Well, do we, do we put the code in there now, or do we approve it?
No, no, it doesn't say, it just says you have to come up with one.
And I don't know how we can come up with one, 'cause we can't meet any more than three people, you know, you like to talk, you like to talk in the dark, blah, 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 but we're gonna sit here and bore the public for hours upon hours, I like Skeet, I like Sparks.
Well, I think what was suggested was that we each submit our proposals to Brian, he goes over those, and then we can all discuss what we like from each proposal in a meeting. Is that, did I?
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that works best open meeting wise, I mean, I mean, if there's, if there are high concepts that are overlapping, then obviously I'm not gonna listen twice, so we can come forward and hopefully just have a discussion about the ones that are sort of novel or different from someone else's, so.
What we're doing, I don't want to do right now.
What we're voting on today is just an ordinance that clarifies, rather than department heads their liaisons, and a couple corrections that we've discussed here in the meeting, and an item that says that the city council should come up with their own code of conduct, and at a separate time, you guys would come up with your code of conduct.
And just to clarify, this is new, okay, and one of the acts to approve moves this to the second reading, it has to be more public hearing, and this is not fine approval.
Correct, correct, okay.
So I would amend my motion to include the correction that Councilman Alworth made regarding the administration department.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Any second on the side?
This is just being tense, at this time, we really don't need a second, we would like to move on, if you have to.
Well, it does, it does need a second in order for it to be noticed in paper, and for it to be, on the agenda for a second reading, yes, it would need a second.
Oh, for a second, I'm, I'm on second.
Any further discussion on this side? Call for the vote one by one, Michelle?
Aye.
Ernie?
Aye.
Ed?
Hello.
Jim?
May.
With that, I suppose I'm tiebreaker, and I'll vote in favor of it. So we will move on then to new business. We have a few reports today, uh, C D business item one, council member, city treasurer, trust, letter group insurance representative, discussion for possible action, selection of healthcare coverage for the city of E Lee, December first, November thirtieth, twenty
My name's Mike Kiki, with Letter Group, and see your city. So, in, in the replacement of insurance renewal from this year, last year was with Cigna, as you can see on that front page, the Cigna numbers, last year we moved from, we moved to Cigna because there was a lot of, a huge price difference, and it was almost too much to ignore, so we, we went, went to Cigna. It's been good this year, but, as you can see, their renewal was a thirty, thirty-eight percent increase, and so, you know, that was kind of, it was kind of, I don't wanna say expected by any means, but it was kind of worth it, hey, we are, we are taking a big reduction, and this would be a possibility, but it was, it was too big to ignore for, for last year, so we, we decided to move forward. And with the thirty-eight percent increase, we obviously decided to look at other options that would be more suitable for the city. I'll go through a couple of those. The next page, following page is Anthem's quote. It wasn't really anywhere in the ballpark, so I'll just kinda skip over that, I have to go to the next page. Sierra Health and Life had some options that were, that were more suitable on the medical insurance side. As you can see here, so there's a couple different options. The first option, it says Silver Fifteen Two Thousand is a more similar plan to what you've currently got, it's, it's almost identical, it's, if anything, it's improved in a few different ways, but that is a six percent increase over last year versus a thirty-eight percent increase, okay? The rates aren't there because the rates, it's different, the rates here are per age, of each person, where the, the current rates with Cigna are just, they take one average rate, and it's one rate for, for everybody regardless of their age, so there's not a direct comparison there, but just the overall premium based on who's enrolled now, and who will be enrolled in December is a six percent increase there, okay? There's another plan that's similar, it's a higher deductible, it's three thousand instead of two thousand, that would be a zero percent increase, so, kinda depending on the budget, that would be something that would, would stay the same as far as your rates go, but it would be a little bit lesser of a benefit. Okay? Questions there on, on that? Okay, and do you have a recommendation on, and I, I know I think that...
Well, between the two options, what I ended up doing was I sent out a letter, and then on top, the employees get them, and a comparison of what they're contributing now towards their health insurance, and what the difference will be between what they're paying now, and between the HSA and P P L plan that we kinda selected those two. I did get about four responses back from the employees, and they all basically said the Silver Fifteen Two Thousand HSA, and the biggest reasons were because the deductibles stand the same, your out-of-pocket coverage went down from, I think, fourteen thousand seven hundred to ten thousand four hundred, and after your deductible is paid, you used to have to pay a percentage, I think it was twenty percent, this one, you pay a set price of fifteen dollars per visit, so now they've got a set price. So after you amend your deductible, you're actually, depending on your usage, obviously, you're gonna help with the, this offer is guaranteed.
But the total, the total risk of the out-of-pocket amount that each employee would pay is just significantly lower on this new plan?
And of course, you, you're older people, and I'm happy because it's age-dated, but they understand, I think, that it's, it's the cost of the city's payment, that it's just part of, you know, keeping the health insurance going.
And those, those age-dated rates is how it's bid in the past, other than this, this last year, so it's, it's something that's bid.
Yeah, they, they've been through it before.
Do we have any questions for the treasurer or insurance representative?
I just got a question for the treasurer, how will this fit into your budget as we, this starts when January first, or no, December first?
No, December first. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what increase they did from last year, 'cause I just don't have the information, but it's better than the thirty-eight percent. So, yes.
And then, on the dental and vision, I'll just, those are in the packet, I'll, if everything's pretty much staying the same, the rates went up on the, on the dental by about fourteen percent, but everything else is staying the same, the benefits, and I think things have been running well with that, and so we decided there would be no changes recommended in that regard, so. Our local healthcare providers have never...
Yes, that's required, guaranteed, you know, there, that they go out here. There is, um, I did check into, 'cause I was asked about, what was that, at the, what are you calling it?
Gym membership?
Yeah, the, the wellness program, and the insurance does not, Lindsey told me that small groups, they just don't do that. There is at the gym, I did check with Anytime Fitness, if they gave it groups breaks, but she said they didn't, but when I talked to her, she said that like the clinic, at the sheriff's department, they have it where if their members go a certain amount of time, they give them a break, so I would, I could show that out there or something, and I don't think it would be a huge cost to the city, but I will, um, I, I checked with the gym, so, I don't know if that would be...
The Aqua Center, Liverpool gives a discount, that for...
Do you think, I don't think we even thought about that.
Yeah, they do that, but my wife goes there, she gets a discount for the break.
So to me, that, there's things that we could maybe promote for wellness within, somewhere.
Well, the benefit on that, even though you wouldn't get it from the insurance, is that if we're more proactive, and we have less visits to the doctor, that makes it more competitive for us as a group to get insurance against that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
I mean, it's a soft, sure, thing to look at.
I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it seem like it's gonna be a huge increase by any means, 'cause it may not, but yeah, there's, it, it's certainly, there's certainly a lot of benefits to it, yeah.
And then I guess the other thing I would, I'd like to say is I'm gonna try and really work with the employees to explain the HSA work about contributing into the HSA program, and how it would then fit them with this plan to do that.
More out of each time, how we use that plan? Any other questions?
But is what, if, on this, on the health thing, is, is not all of it based on our usage, I guess you're gonna say, or is there?
Um, so, so the, the, the current, the current plan is, is based on more usage, but the one we're going to is not based on usage, is basically a usage of the, kind of the Nevada block as a whole, and so, we're considered along with the whole state, not just...
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to, you know, with that option, with a way of option, or...
It was the option, Jeanette, it was the option...
It was the very first one, the Silver Fifteen Two Thousand, HSA.
Do I have a second to that?
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry them so ordered, thanks for your work on that, Jeanette, I appreciate you guys coming down to do that. All right, we'll move on to item two, Mayor Robertson, Track the Exchange Representatives, discussion only, presentation, presentation on Track B Exchange, Exchange's Harm Reduction Program, hey, Chelsea.
Mayor Robertson, we've been talking for a while, this is going to be today, we had the opportunity, we could come about two weeks ago to talk in the public section, and we're just gonna wanna explain a little bit more about what it is best to do, and then kind of limit it up for discussion, if you have any questions. So, my name is Chelsea Chee, and this is Christina Corriga, and we're here from Track B Exchange, so we're located in Las Vegas, Nevada, but we cover the entire state of Nevada, and what we do is we do harm reduction. So, we opened up in February of twenty seventeen as the first exchange in Clark County, and we utilize a harm reduction approach, which just looks at reducing risk of substance misuse amongst people that are using drugs, but we particularly specialize in people that might be injecting drugs. So our goal, short term, is to prevent HIV hepatitis and overdose death, but long term, obviously, our goal is to get people into treatment and get them on the road to recovery. So what we do is we offer syringe exchange, we also offer naloxone, which is an opiate overdose reversal medication, we do HIV and hepatitis C rapid testing, and we do linkage to care for HIV and hepatitis C care, as well as linkage to care to drug treatment, and all of those services are free of charge, and we're able to offer that throughout the state of Nevada. We have some community partnerships with other southern Nevada agencies, including public health, substance abuse treatment centers, as well as medication-assisted treatment centers, and medical health providers as well.
All right, my name is Christina Corra, I also work at Track B, client coordinator and social health services, so I wanna tell you just a little bit about Scott County, Indiana, it's a very small rural community population, actually, less than Ely, about five hundred, so people I think tend to think this will never happen, well, this has come to our community, but it was terrifying what happened in Scott County, it's about an hour and a half south of Indianapolis, and they have a massive HIV outbreak, and this is between two thousand eleven and two thousand fifteen, they didn't really catch it though until two thousand fifteen, and within that year, about two hundred people had been infected, and so that's in a town of under twenty-five hundred, it's about ten percent of the smaller area that had HIV. It started with a, a small group of IV drug users that were sharing the drug Opana, which is a prescription painkiller, it was very expensive to get one, so they would like go in and share it, and also sharing syringes, they were not able to get any syringes in town. Sharing those, reusing them, and syringes, condoms, and cookers, not using anything sterile or new, they ended up passing Hep C and HIV between each other, it didn't stay just in that group, it spread out to the community through partners, friends, family members. Local public health leaders recommended syringe exchange to help combat the transmission of HIV, people were uncomfortable, as it is, it can be sort of, it's hard to get around. Their recommendations were rejected by the state, and then unfortunately, after it occurred in two thousand fifteen, after which Scott County did get a syringe exchange, this was the first one in the non-urban area of the U S, as a response to the crisis, I don't wanna say it was too late, it's never too late, but having gotten sooner, it would have been a positive in this outbreak, and with exchange, this has an eighty-eight percent reduction in sharing drugs. One last, um, part of that is also very cost-effective, so the cost of treating Hep C in a year ranges from like eighty to a hundred thousand per person, whereas Track B, one syringe costs about two and a half cents. So per year, per person, syringe exchange, the U N A says about twenty-three seventy-one dollars per year per person, so obviously, it's a farm rate for a lot of hundred thousand.
So the reason that we like to talk about Scott County whenever we are introducing this topic is because that's when the C D C, the Center for Disease Control, started looking at rural areas as possible centers for outbreak. We'd always kind of looked at large urban areas as places where people might be using drugs, and could have an outbreak of HIV and hepatitis C, but then, after that, there was kind of study where they were looking at rural areas throughout the country, and there were two areas in the state of Nevada that were actually deemed as kind of prime for an outbreak, although those areas weren't like Pine County or Ely, but the entire state of Nevada was actually looked at as a potential for an outbreak. So what we started doing around that time was traveling throughout the state to find out just kind of what the strengths and weaknesses are in different areas. So when we came to Ely, the first thing that we did was move out into community members, we talked to some people from the sheriff's department, met with the police chief, also went to the pharmacies, and went to the public health nurse's office, and we just looked at some of the great strengths that Ely has. And we were also there because in order for us to do a lot of what we do, we wanted to get just a letter of approval or acknowledgement from local law enforcement, as well as from the city council, to be able to kind of continue our work, and to talk about syringe change, and also harm reduction with people that are misusing drugs.
So what we've done in Las Vegas is we have public health vending machines, and which also say we, we take acknowledgement or approval for, it's actually put some of these machines in Ely. We don't have a location yet, or it's something that we've just been working towards having here, we currently have five in Las Vegas, they're the first and only, they're prime in the U S, so they, anyone that's over eighteen years old, that has some form of ID, can come into our location and sign up for a card, and it just looks like any other vending machine, we have ours located in doors, at healthcare facilities, medical clinics, so places that people can go discreetly, not be seen, get what they need, but also be in touch with healthcare professionals, if they are seeking treatment. So, everything in vending machines is free of charge for the client, visitors have their own unique card and PIN number, they can access one box of thirty syringes per week, they can get naloxone, the overdose reversal medication, hygiene kits, prostate kits, safer sex kits, home insurance kits, and pregnancy tests. So these are things that, so they go in, free of charge, get for themselves, and then be in a place where there are healthcare professionals that can answer questions, and then hopefully link them into recovery, as we've seen in Las Vegas.
Also, in February of this year, we started doing shipping to rural areas as well, so that allows us to be able to offer harm reduction all over the state of Nevada, and we were able to send naloxone to people if they know someone that might be at risk of an opiate overdose, and just some statistics that I wanted to go over, is in Nevada, the number of E R admissions related to opioid overdoses was five per thousand admissions in twenty fifteen, rural residents who overdose mean that close enough to a facility to receive treatment in time, which is why the importance of naloxone is there. Also, heroin-related overdoses doubled... Also heroin-related overdoses doubled between the years of 2011 and 2016. As we know nationwide, right now we're in kind of an opioid crisis as well. In 2015, there were 485 new cases of HIV in Nevada and over 11% of those were attributed to injection drug use. One of the other things that we're able to do is peer recovery, so we were lucky enough to be able to hire a peer here in Ely. So here's someone with lived experience of drug use that is both willing to share their story as well as open and willing to help people get into treatment. When someone has that lived experience, a lot of times it's easier for them to feel comfortable talking to someone about their use and also to be able to convince them that there is light at the end of the tunnel. So we were lucky enough to find someone here locally that's willing to do that. And then we just kind of want to end, talking about, a little more about our naloxone stats, then we kind of leave it up to questions.
So just wanted to share that Trackee Exchange has given out 1,308 doses of naloxone in 2017, which saved 30 lives. In 2018, we gave out 2,800 doses of naloxone, 22,000 lives were saved. So in the, overall, in the two and a half years we've been operating, or the naloxone, we distributed that saved over 200 lives in the last eight years. Would love to open up, anyone have any questions?
Yes.
Who runs the machines?
Well, currently we run all the machines because they're located in Las Vegas. If we were able to place one here, we would have our peer also helping machines. So there would be some oversight and we'd be able to sign up usage and things like that.
So they, the local person would be able to sign you board as well, they would not do that on a loss?
That's correct, yes, they'd be able to sign someone up as well as they'd be able to work with them on proper syringe disposal. That's kind of our other thing that we do, we're able to place a sharps container somewhere. We've actually been in talks with the hospital where we might be able to place a sharps container outside so that people who have these syringes can dispose of those safely and we'd be able to pick them up and dispose of them.
In addition, this is also open to diabetics?
It is.
Other people who need or use needles in our community. As the council here may not be aware, we do have quite an opioid crisis going on in the state, which we're talking about later in the business here as well. I think these kind of programs are really, really helpful for the community health in general. Are there any other questions for...
How are you all funded primarily?
Well, we're funded through various sources, so we have some state funding, some, and locally in Clark County funding. And we also do get some grants from the CDC through the state as well.
Any other questions from the council?
Is there any other rural communities that got this going now?
Currently, no, we are actually the first community, so Las Vegas was the first community in the U.S. to have a vending machine program. So it's a relatively new program, it's working out very well. We know that across the country, other people are looking at the program. We are getting lots of calls about just kind of figuring out how to set this machine up in other areas. It had been something that was in use in Europe as well as Australia and New Zealand for years. And it was successful there, so we were the first ones to bring it to the continent of the U.S.
Any other questions? We appreciate you guys coming out and presenting. Item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, approval to move ordinance, approval to move ordinance 725, bill number 201911 to second reading. Ordinance 725, amends to Title VI, Chapter 12, Section 2, entitled "Highways and Roads in the City TV Designated for Purposes of OHV Travel", bringing the city code, if you conform to the state law, clarifying certain sections of the city code, requiring that the OHVs that operate on city roads and highways have liability insurance, adding a separability clause and all other provisions not designated shall or may not change. I will attend moving on this item.
I'll do the table this item.
I will attend second on that.
I would second that, I'd like to discuss that.
Discussion, sure.
I think for me to do table, we need to have, to put these groups here because I mentioned the DMV and it says possess the valid license specific to the type of OHV the operator is driving. There is a license required for OHV in state Nevada.
Well, that, the intent of that was so I can verify it was for if they're operating a motorcycle versus something else. Because motorcycles fall under the state definition of OHV, dirt bikes.
Motorcycle, especially active motorcycles, have a license, it's on your driver's license.
Right, that's the idea, is that if you're driving a motorcycle...
A dirt bike?
A dirt bike.
You don't have to have it on the license.
If you're going to operate it on the city's...
For the city.
And a girl's a different ballgame all to get. That's, that's highly legal, so that one's a real problem because it's going to trap people coming in the area. The next one requires proof of liability insurance, I checked on that. The only liability you can get is if the homeowner is plus, but what happens, you can come out of the area. I think we need to have a meeting with, with the OHV people, sit down, because we're just restricted everywhere if you want to come in here. The mayor's owner, whoever, they come in here, you have to have proof of insurance being carried with you on that machine. That's, that's a killer right there. And the third one's very healthy, there is no helmet law for side by sides.
There is, there's a law, yeah.
Is there? Not on the side by side, if you have a seatbelt, if you understand, you don't have to have a helmet.
I respectfully disagree.
Okay, so I think that this whole thing needs to be looked at. And I, I want the opportunity to have immediate...
Yeah, so the only thing that really changes with this, and it, I mean, it's obviously controversial, is the liability insurance. The goal of this was just to kind of add more provisions of state that were already existing state law into one document so somebody could look at this and understand what the law was. Because we had a lot of feedback back that people didn't understand what was being enforced here, so. The liability insurance is going to be a big political discussion, right?
Well, let me clarify, it's liability insurance only if you're going to be operating on a city street. If you're going to take your dirt bike, put it in the back of your truck, drive it out to the hills and ride around, whatever you like. If you're going to put your ATV on a trailer and drive it out of town, right on the license, fine. But I have a serious problem with vehicles being on city streets with other drivers who have to be licensed and insured and not being insured. And I realize there's going to be, you know, this is a requirement that some people have not been required to do. But I, I collect cars, all of my hobbies have to be insured. I pay the insurance, I operate on a city street. I shouldn't, you know, I shouldn't be exempted from that. And I don't think anybody else who's going to be operating on a city street should be able to do without a license or insurance. If we want to table this and work through some of the issues, that's fine, but I will be staunch on that issue. I, I'm not willing, I've, I've had a lot of complaints and I know Jennifer will back me up on this as well. There have been people coming into city hall who've had issues with this. People riding up and down their street without the liability insurance. And there are other states, our states around us do require that, as we found out. They also require liability insurance. Whether or not they do that or not, whether or not they enforce it, maybe something else, but it is on their books. I do understand the issues there, but there is some exposure and liability and risk here that I think needs to be addressed. Carrie, I did say you get five minutes here and if there's something you'd like to speak on behalf of the ordinary public.
I'm agreeing with Mr. Spare, I think we should table this and have further discussion. Since the initiation of this, which our club was very responsible for that, we've been cut out of wood. City did take a recommendation for them that, they revamped it, not as recently as it did. But after that, we were cut out across...